We're going.
We're going. I'd like to call the order, the Board of Select and meeting of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-fourth, time is six P M. Let's start our meeting.
Through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes should be in your packet. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of April first?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April first.
Twenty second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, I'd like to move that we add an agenda item, tax refund to new business, part D.
I'd like to make a motion.
We need a second on that one, first. Second?
Yes, I second that.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye. I can make a motion and we put budget on your old business D. And discuss the budget?
Yes.
Um, I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, keeping up to date. Present to speak, public participation has occurred. Speakers are limited by appropriateness, staying on topic and maintaining decorum. Time may be limited to maintain progress. Please request to reserve time during the meeting if you wish to speak to a specific agenda item. Is there anybody in the room that wishes to speak first? Seeing going, oh.
Well, I just wanted to speak to the vote, your appointments, I do have to wait.
Yeah, yes, that would be, I will reserve your time.
Okay.
That's the emergency services building, yeah. Okay, anybody, oh, Erica.
Hi, thank you, Erica Waschinsky. I would like to address an item on your agenda, but I'd like to do it now. As you look to appoint members to the Fire Department Building Committee, I ask you to remember that the makeup of this committee should look like our community. It should be a diverse cross-section of Wellington residents. Your initial creation of the committee immediately alienated Wellington residents. I would ask you to clearly identify with minimal or no ties, its meaning and qualifications, or in your case, disqualifiers. Who's vetting this process now in a transparent matter? Is it completely subjective of this board? In our small town, ties to a fire department is more common than not. Hearing a tie but not being a member should not, having a tie but not being a member should not be a disqualifier. You're already assuming the position a person is taking, and that could be said of any member without this added qualifier. It's prejudential, prejud- sorry, prejudicial, and not your call to make, in my opinion. This committee, as it currently stands, is all white male, mainly in their fifties and sixties, and not representative of both political parties. While I don't think this should be political, I certainly think this should be addressed. We should do better and we can do better. The Board of Finance couldn't choose their own representative and send you a candidate to appoint to this commission. I would ask you to strongly think about who it is and what the makeup of this committee wants to look like when you make your appointments tonight. Thank you.
Let's have this vote.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. No, no more answer. Just checking. Correspondence. We've received a number of pieces of correspondence from people that are interested in the Fire Department Efficiency Committee. Those emails should be in your packet. We have a a number of very weak candidates, I think I I'm very interested in at least two of them. So.
Do you have another correspondence besides the?
I don't believe so. Oh. Appointments for the E D C and appointments for the veterans, our municipal veterans representative. But those are, I don't think we have. Those are under new business. Those are under new business, yes. Great. So now we, I get to speak for a bit here. Following the last, the presidential preference primary, the PPP, the stage was removed from the common room. When they pulled it up, they found out that there was a huge hole in the floor. So they could fall straight through into the hallway down here. They were able to frame that back out and finish it off. It exposed some of the original flooring from the factory, which was reasonably interesting. They've now put the subfloor in on all that, the room is safe to go into. They've started the reconstruction of the wall behind it. They've also built a storage room there for the registrars for all the new equipment that they need. It's coming along fine, they need to wait for things to dry so they can finish it up over there. We were approached by C E N, the Connecticut Educational Network, which is the people that do all the fiber optics for municipalities, fire departments, school systems and governments, and they have gotten a large grant. So they are willing to pay a hundred percent of what it costs to put fiber optics directly to this building, which will cut out the microwave connection between the center school and the Wellington Hill Fire Department, which is a point of, multiple points of failure in there that will all bring the system down. As we found out last week when the microwave system went down and all the hardware had to be changed out. During the original construction, they had bought a second set of hardware, so now we are down to zero sets of hardware. So if it goes out again, we're going to have a three to five week wait until we can get it fixed. So I'm hoping that we can get this new network in before then. We should have direct connect, we should have a better connection, and it's being paid for by the state. The one drawback is that we are required to have a service contract costing us thirty-five dollars a month for the next twenty years, which comes out to eight thousand dollars over the next twenty years, eight thousand something. Are you checking my math?
No.
Okay. So I have given them the go ahead to do that. I think they said it was a like an eighty thousand dollar project or something like that. They're paying a hundred percent of it, so I thought that was kind of a no brainer. We have a town meeting coming up on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, the call's gone out for that, that's for the budget. To send it to hopefully send it to referendum. I bet with the town engineer, the Old Town Hall septic system has been engineered. And we've given him the go ahead to start next month. It should be in time, so it doesn't interfere with either the tag sale or the car show. There may be a space where they won't be able to travel this year until the grass gets a chance to take root or something. I did not want to wait until November to do that, so we're doing that now. The F O I that was initiated by Nick Tella has come to a conclusion, there was a, another hearing at the F O I Commission. Their finding was that we needed to give Nick all the information we had for free. So he came in and there was a large file, he went through the whole file. And he, I don't believe he found anything of interest, but he has been given every opportunity now. So as far as I can see, that case has come to its logical conclusion.
So that was, he wanted to see the old communications about the warehouse, I think, right?
No, school building, school building committee.
School building committee, that's right, that's right. And he wanted to see it for the school building committee and the first selectman, I think.
There was, there was a list, it was the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance Chairman, the School Building Committee, the School Building Committee Chairman, the Board of Selectmen, the First Selectmen, and I don't remember what all else.
I think it was.
I don't, I have the files on.
Right, and I think it was the Board of the School Building Committee did not need to provide any information.
Right.
What the Board of Selectmen did.
Yes. Board of Selectmen was the only ones that did.
Thanks.
Could I, could I make a point of clarification on that?
Sure.
You say. Just to clarify that, you are correct as far as who was supposed to submit or respond. However, the materials that were gained in the search that were potentially responsive materials did cross over into school building committee. It was just that the school building committee didn't have to be the one that actually took the action. But there were school building committee documents and emails that were subject to it and were provided. And everything met the requirement of the F O I Commission. And the only arguable matter at the end was pay or no pay. The commission decided no pay. But I think it's important people know the town did respond and did provide what was requested.
Yep, after the F O I Commission gave its rule.
The, well, right, because it was an argument whether need to be paid for or not.
And they came out with no pay.
Correct.
Erica?
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to make the same point Mike did, there were responsive documents from the School Building Committee, part of that F O I. I certainly know it better than many of you. And the documents were readily available and they have been for some time. We didn't only give them to them after they directed, they were always available, it was a choice by Mr. Tella at that point. So I just think that clarification needs to be made.
Okay. Well, he came in, you vote. Then you, then saw everything there was to see. That's finished with that, let's move on to the Public Works. Whatever my Public Works page.
Who's on the page with the appointments?
Yeah, I'm getting there. I got one appointment.
That's the email, there should be a whole page with all the appointments.
I don't have it.
There might be in my friend's, there's.
All right. Yeah, I'm gonna need that anyways for the appointments.
Start with using one.
Uh, Public Works? Yeah, the E D C ones are on there too, because this has X's and blanks and stuff in it, so.
Fill in the blank space by handling something further on. You can get a summary.
The, yeah, let's, let's fill in these spaces by going down the old business for a minute.
Oh.
Thank you. So D P W, they've been doing the road sweeping, they had some problems with the water truck, it broke a valve or something, so that held them up for a while. They replaced a culvert on Trask Road. They removed the stage in the town office building, the guys from Public Works really did an outstanding job with that and showed some serious skills and you know, you know, personal initiative in fixing that, they I was, I was impressed with what they did. They did build a new storage room for the registrar's office. It looks pretty good up there, it does change the whole dynamics of that room, so if you get a chance, have, take a look. They still haven't quite finished. They cleaned up some trees from the last storm and chipped brush. They started bringing some of the gravel roads, uh, which kept them from washing out in the last rainstorm, and they've been doing a lot of vehicle maintenance and repairs. So new business. Appointments. Do you want me to make the motions? That way I have it right here in front of me.
I'm motion, I want you to make the motions.
All right, I move to appoint Karen.
With some benefit issues.
Did we lose everybody?
We can hear you now, as soon as you began your motion, you were frozen, so you might want to start that over again.
Okay. I moved to appoint Karen Kote as the Wellington Municipal Veteran Representative, effective four fifteen, twenty twenty-four, for an indefinite term. The term lasts as long as she serves as Human Services Coordinator, or Services Director. And you seconded Matt?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and you asked.
And I did, that's what it was, I hadn't heard of that. We started giving response to people.
Yes, the human, the municipal veteran representative, every county has to have one as point of contact to the town between the state and veterans. So she will learn more and pass. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would like to move to appoint Michael Johansson as a regular member of the Wellington Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy, effective four fifteen, twenty twenty-four, expiring January first, twenty twenty-nine. I second that. Any discussion?
I met Michael when I was off campaigning. He came to our last E D C meeting, seems like he'd be a valuable addition to the E D C group. We have a strategic plan going on right now regarding building up our grant list base for taxation purposes and expanding our business revenues. And I think he'd be great at issues.
Very good. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move to reappoint Cheryl Mitchell as a regular member of the Wellington Economic Development Commission, effective retroactive to three three twenty-four, expiring three two twenty-nine.
I would second that motion.
Any further discussions?
She was a valuable member of the E D C, she attends every single meeting, she contributes very well. Couldn't function without her, and I think that you wonder, wonderful if we appointed her again.
Excellent.
That's something I think we wouldn't have.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we get to the hard part here.
Can we start with Keller for appointment of emergency services?
We will, I was gonna go through the Fire Department ones first and then get to the, we'll do that right after the fire. Fire. The Fire Department chose their members, so the first one I'd like to do is appoint Tom Schneider, a regular member of the, regular member of the Emergency Services Facilities Building Committee. Tom is the chief of the Wellington Hill Fire Department.
Is Tom a taxpayer?
Yes. He was on, he was on, reappointed.
I think we've met a different.
Yes. I don't know. And then his wife is a town employee. I, I, I saw I got a second, I don't think.
I'll send him that.
All right. Anything?
Nope. No, I just, I guess I was gonna, I don't know him.
Okay, Tom Schneider.
Tom Schneider, I don't think I know him.
Probably been in my life. Probably. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All in.
I'd like to nominate James Knight as an alternate to the the Emergency Services Facility Building Committee.
I'll second that motion.
All right. James is a the president of Wellington Hill Fire Department. And yes, the Knights are in town.
Yeah.
I just wanted to catch a question before. Any, anything from you?
No.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to nominate Tyler Milletz as a, as a regular member of the Emergency Services Facilities Building Committee. He's a member of Wellington Fire Department one.
Is he a resident?
He is not a resident, but he is a taxpayer. He's also former chief of the Fire Department.
I've had a lot of people contacting me and indicating that they think that people go in town, this board should be voters. Shouldn't be going.
Yeah, Tyler is a voter in town meeting as a taxpayer.
So he owns property?
Yes. And he was a selectman in this.
He was, he's been around a while. Is it alternate or?
Regular. Any more discussion?
Voter in town meeting.
Yes.
Just not voter on.
For elected officials.
Elected officials. Or referendum?
Yes. Referendums are money, so therefore they can vote on, I believe. I'm getting a yes from a former selectman and a yes from a former first selectman.
And a maybe from a.
Maybe from another former selectman. All right, hearing not a lot more conversation, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
You didn't get a second on that one either.
Yeah. Still in the discussion, well, I guess there was.
Well, we can't discuss it without a second.
That's true, we didn't get a second. I'll second. Right, second, okay. For this, it does, it does seem that we were, I mean, there was quite a bit of chatter about residents, not just landowner.
There, there was.
I mean, you could have, we have landowners that live in California, probably voted a town meeting, but they wouldn't have much skin in the game about facilities.
Right.
So curious about that. I'm not, I'm not discounting his knowledge or expertise.
Right.
But as a voting member. I don't, this isn't regular, this is a representative of one of the fire departments, right?
Yes.
Have we?
The, the fire departments were asked to find.
Right. So this is their choice.
This is their choice.
The person they would like to have is their. Person, have we pointed an alternate member for, from that fire department?
Not yet, there's the next thing up.
Think they'd be able to switch him?
You're not gonna wanna switch. The next one is neither a resident nor a taxpayer.
Well, we certainly want expertise, seven ten. Very important, very important. And Tyler has volunteered a lot of time.
You ready?
I think I'm ready.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I would like to nominate Alex Moore as an alternate from the Wellington Hill Fire Department one.
Wellington Fire Department number one.
Wellington Fire Department number one. I have it written down correctly here, I just didn't get it out of the mouth, sorry.
I wrote it down correctly, he didn't say it correctly.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Alex is the, is the fire chief of that department, he's got multiple experiences from multiple departments. And he has been chosen by his department to represent them. This is a non-voting.
Do you get a second?
Yes.
Non-voting, is he a resident?
No.
Non-resident and not a taxpayer?
No.
If you, and it comes, something comes up for vote, you ultimately vote.
Yes.
I don't know, I'm not, again, not to discount his expertise.
No. The thing is that I was asked to see if it was legal to put non-residents on, on boards and commissions and and, meaning on the art commission, for instance, there's a fair number of people that are
Right.
non-residents, so.
Well, expertise can be channeled through a lot of different avenues. You don't have to be sitting at the table to have influence over something and can have someone speak for you or gather that knowledge and be able to share it. And he was able to contribute in real time to those discussions, you know. Are you gonna have the same? I don't know, and you're the person, are you gonna have the same person? Yeah, well, you're a representative to that board.
Well, yes, that's time, that person.
Yes, so I mean, if they adopt the same kind of rules regarding public comment that we have, then anyone. Correct, well, yeah, I, I don't, our committee hasn't formed yet, we haven't had our first meeting and elected a chair and how, how, the first meeting will be about that, about the structure of it. Well, yeah, no, I don't. If, if you're, if you look at the fire department has, they have people that are representing, they can all meet and say, here's what we're gonna talk about, here's what you need to say at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter what member of the department you are, you have the ability to channel it through your, your representative.
Yeah, I'm inclined to vote no.
I guess, I think we have to draw the line on taxpayers at a minimum. Residents are probably the most desirable.
And voting resident taxpayers is the most, most, most.
Yeah, right, right.
All right. Any further discussion?
Uh, no.
Alex and Hannah.
Alex?
I understand your point, if you need a different name, you can use Stuart.
Beautiful.
Stuart is a taxpayer, found in a, a resident.
Thank you, Alex.
I think we're in the middle of a discussion and a motion. We shouldn't entertain public comment.
Alright, just as a point of work.
Well, the point of, yeah, the, the discussion was on the subject.
No, I, yeah, right, but we're in the middle of deliberation here.
Right.
And then to have people sort of influence.
Sorry.
If he feels a one from this.
Yeah.
You're probably correct.
Alright, I'll, I'll go learn about my feelings, because I'm right above the point of order.
You want to draw?
So, why don't?
Let's, let me make a motion on the table.
Motion on the table, let's vote on it. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
I'm opposed.
The, uh, motion fails. So I will reintroduce a, another motion that we nominate Stuart Cobb. As the alternate from the Wellington Fire Department Number One. Stuart is, uh, Emergency Management Director as well as a longtime member of Wellington Fire Department One. And is both a resident and a taxpayer. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that. Okay. Has anybody, um, reached out to Stuart to see if you wanted to do that? I know Chief Moore said that, uh, Stuart could be supplemented or inserted in here. Has anybody talked to Stuart?
I have not talked to Stuart. Based on that, do you wanna table this nomination?
I, I don't know. I mean, what do you guys think?
Oh, the other applicants have, well, look at, these are, these are being voted, this is from the department. Is, he's an alternative, and so we did propose about that.
Yeah.
I don't think they're just throwing a name out. I think we all know Stuart.
Yep. Stuart served on any number of counts.
Okay.
So. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's go to our members at large. We have received a good number of. Say about six. Applicants and two of them were really stood out to me. So I would like to, uh. Nominate Brenna Kelleher. Brenna sent us an email outlining her background in construction. She's been a town resident coming up through the school system. She's lived here a long time.
EMT.
And she's been in EMT for a short period of time. So. Alright. Any other discussion?
I do know Brenna. She's, she's very popular. I think she'd be a valuable asset to the. To the committee.
I read this in detail. It's a fairly long letter. And she's qualified. I think she'd be able to contribute very well. That's my support.
Okay. Any other, um. Discussions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reading through them, the second person I'd like to nominate is Dave Gankowski. Uh, Dave is a, a longtime, uh, resident and taxpayer in the town of Wellington. Also has extensive construction experience.
You know Dave?
Yeah, I, I didn't realize he served as part of the works for the library.
Yes.
And that's a valuable experience.
So David Floyd sometimes is. Floyd Margaret is, uh, also been. Had a lot of people down the library for it. The other, oh.
I can second that. I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now. Here's where we get to why everybody's here today. The, uh, Board of Finance was asked to choose a member. And they had a three-three tie. Between Bruce Lawler and Britt Rothausen. Is that right? Both of them, I think, would do a fantastic job. Uh, Bruce is the current. Sorry, I'm. My, my pocket's digging too, so.
And Mills call.
Bruce is the, uh, current Chair and regular member of the Board of Finance. Britt is a alternate, and that I believe is a two-year term. Um, I think they would both be well qualified. Oh, I need a second.
I'll second.
Oh, wait, we don't have a, we don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion. Can we nominate Bruce Lawler for, for that? And they have that discussion first?
Sure.
I'd like to nominate Bruce Lawler for Chairman of the Board of Finance for the, uh, open position on the Fire Public Building Committee. Second?
Well, I'll second that.
Okay. Um. I, I, I think Britt could bring a lot to this committee. I, I think Bruce could also bring a lot to this committee. I, I don't know how to.
I have a kind of a problem with a chairperson of a committee being a member of. That's, that, that's kind of too much horsepower somehow. It doesn't, it doesn't feel quite right.
Um, so, uh, I don't know. Um, Bruce was elected in the Board of Finance. And I think, I don't know, uh, was.
Um, Bruce was, Bruce was elected as Board, Chair of the Board of Finance by this board. Because once again, they had a three-three tie.
Right. Okay. That's correct. Understood. I have a member of the audience with their hand.
Oh, and, and, oh, I'm sorry. I was looking up there.
Um, I don't know when I can talk, but.
Yeah, no, it'd be good.
Okay. So I, I just wanted to say, I was the one who nominated Britt, um, on the Board of Finance, and I didn't really get a chance to explain. My thinking on that, um, but I just wanted to, to let you know what my thinking is, which is that I've known Britt for a long time. She is a researcher. She is a very thorough person. She is very committed to what she's, what she's doing. I think she'd be the exact kind of person that you need on this committee to help. Pull all this information together and make sense out of it. That's sort of one of the things that she's really great at. Um. And also, I think that's something that she could bring to the board. But it's also what she can take away from the board, which is to bring back to, to a different part of town, I guess you could say. Um, what, what's going on in that board and to create some legitimacy and get buy-in from the rest of the community. So. Um, that's just, that's just how I see it, because I, I do appreciate that, that, I don't know some of the other people that you just appointed, so I'm not sure. How that looks from a, um, just like a, you know, five thousand foot, um. Perspective, but I think it, it couldn't hurt to add a couple of different people on here, so. That's it.
Thank you. I, I, I. Thinking out loud here. I. Not sure we. The Board of Finance ran into a problem by nominating one person at a time and then voting for it. I think what we should do is make a motion that would choose one of these two candidates.
Withdraw the motion that's currently on the table.
And, and make a motion.
Hold on.
Alright, go ahead.
Make the motion, withdraw the ones on the table, so we can vote on that, right?
Yes.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we can do a separate one, right?
Alright, yes. Do you wanna make it or do you want me to make it?
Well, and then we have a, what's, what's the motion?
I would, I would like to move that we, we, uh. Choose a candidate among the two given to us by the Board of Finance.
That's fine. Uh, I.
Bruce and, and Britt.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. I talked to Bruce before our meeting tonight. Talked to him on the phone while I was driving over here. Bruce is at church tonight. He can't make it. Um, Bruce was elected, um, to the Board of Finance by the people of Wellington. He's served, uh, the Board of Finance through one budget season. He's a wonderful guy. He's done a great job. He's worked very hard. He's tried to find the middle ground. Um, my concern with, with Brianna, or I'm sorry, Britt, I apologize. I don't know, so. And with Britt is that she's not elected. Um, I think.
No, no, elected.
Oh, elected, huh? Alright, so I didn't know that, so thank you. Um, alright.
Yeah, yeah, that's what you're in for now.
Questions?
Go ahead.
Since I'm. Yeah, I am the president of the committee. I just want to check. It was a long time ago.
Two weeks.
And two weeks, and two weeks. Um, maybe since Britt is here and Matt had an opportunity to talk with Bruce today, maybe Britt would be allowed to speak. Yes. We might be able to hear something from her.
Please, would you like to speak?
Sure. Um, I am very interested in working on this position. I do not have any ties with the fire department other than. The spaghetti dinner that the Wellington Scholarship Foundation runs there, which is excellent, but doesn't really have any firemen involved. Um. I don't have a background in construction other than having worked for a concrete forming company a hundred fifty years ago in Maryland. Uh, and for a law firm in the engineering department, uh, in Hartford, Pepe and Hazard used to be the name of the company. So, no, I don't have experience in that. However, I do have experience in, uh, argument. I have experience in debate. I have experience in, uh, extensive experience in writing. And I also have experience in fundraising and event planning. So some of those things may be of some use, but one of the things that they really. All have in common, other than the research, is working with people for a common goal. And I do think that is something that I'm going to be able to bring. I don't tend to get upset about things. I don't tend to have a lot of ego. In pretty much anything I do. So I'm willing to listen to various sides. I believe there's multiple points of view to almost every argument. And the middle ground is often the path of the right answer. So those are some of the things that I would want to bring. Some of the things that I hope to take away is getting to know more departments in town. Uh, getting to know more people in town. I've been here for twenty-one years, but other than my kids being through the school system, I sometimes feel like I don't know all that many people. So that's one thing I'm looking forward to. Much about it.
Thank you.
But still, I, I still kind of hung up on the, the, the level of, of influence that a sitting chair. They. Bruce was elected to be Chair of the Board of Finance, which is a job in and of itself. So now you're gonna say, well, I'm also part of this committee. That's a, that's a, that's a lot of influence over the ultimate finance. I mean, the Board of Finance is responsible or will ultimately have sort of the key. To deciding whether or not there's gonna be money allocated to build something. That, it seems like, uh, a person, the, the, a chairperson's opinion will, would have more. Influence over the entire committee, whether yea or nay. And, and maybe, maybe an undue influence. It, it doesn't feel quite right to me.
Alright.
Um, where. It would just be like if you were, if you, if you were part of all of your, you know, as his first selection. That's, that's a more powerful position, just because of your day-to-day activities and your ability to influence conversations. Where, well, my influence is much less. And I'm more of just a, a spokesman or someone sort of representative and then eyes and ears. Um, I would think of myself as, as, you know, when I was Chairman of Planning and Zoning, it's a different role. You know, you're, you're, you're. You, you, you write the agenda. You create, you know, you have the ability to steer things in a way. Far more than just a representative member of, of a commission. So. That's my feeling about having a chairperson. On any committee, and it is, that Brett, it would be any chairman of any committee.
I have, um. I, I, I'm sorry.
That's right.
I, I have two, two things on my mind that I, I haven't completely clarified yet. One is that this committee may last longer than a year and a half, and I believe the alternate position is a two-year term. Uh, and the other one is that of the two elected officials. I, I know you see yourself as very much an independent and. But we have one of. We'd have two elected officials from the same side of the. The ballot as, as the elected official's position. Those are, are, are two of my, of my thoughts on that matter, but Britt, do you have any? Any inclination on running again for Board of Finance? Is that something that's your?
It's my intention, yes.
Okay. This is a, um. Extreme difficult decision. And, and I know that there's some people that have, have it very clear in their minds, but I, I am not one of those, so. You have any further?
No.
You have any further?
No.
Alright, I'm going to, uh. Probably make myself in a more difficult situation.
Matt?
Yeah. Would you candidate, would you like to see?
Oh, you're gonna.
We're gonna have to vote by, by candidate instead of the simple yea then.
Oh, oh, well, we'll make the formal, um.
Formal vote. What's your formal vote?
Well, we're gonna make a motion and.
The, the motions already been made in second to, to choose between these two candidates.
I want Bruce Lawler to be considered the first.
I'm opposed to Bruce Lawler as because of his role.
Well, are you for anybody then?
Well, then I am for Britt.
Alright.
For Britt.
I am for Britt. That's, that's a better way to say it.
And I was correct. I am put in an extremely difficult position. I think I'm gonna do something that's gonna make me very unpopular. I think I'm gonna vote for Britt. Do you have that in the minutes? I think we solved that step. Um, next, we get to.
Do they have to do all in favor or anything, or is it done?
No, we're done.
We're done.
Well, well, are we still on seat? Can we remain here for?
Yes.
I'd like to, uh, I've been sort of the coordinator. I don't, I don't. I'm not the chairman, but I have been, um, trying to coordinate the first meeting. Um, a, a location has been a bit of a challenge. I'm gonna talk to Shannon tomorrow and see about. Town hall. I was hoping for neutral ground. I, my, my first choice is the common room at the library, centrally located. They've got a very good, uh. About plenty of seats, plenty of chairs. Uh, they have wifi, they have projectors, they have all of the, 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 the media access that I think would be valuable. And it, unfortunately, um, I, I, I don't know where the, maybe she'll be the staff at the library. Maybe she's the coordinator for the, uh.
She's out right now.
Right, she's out until next week, and that's, that's why I can't talk to her. They're open, what, Tuesdays, Thursdays, or Monday, Wednesday, whatever it is. I thought that, I think my, one of the goal for the meetings is to have something that's consistent. So all of the, uh, attendees and participants know when it is, make consistent time and a consistent place. Uh, she did say, the person I talked to today said, uh, I don't remember what days now, whatever days the library's not open. It's generally not used because nobody wants to do the alarm, get the keys, but I think with, with the number of, uh. Responsible citizens that are on this committee, I don't think it would be a problem to do that. So that, that's my first choice would be the library building on whatever the day nights of the library isn't open. And, uh, regular times, regular places, and that in the evening, I think is best for, for all of the, uh. I, I hope that can happen within the next two weeks. I'd like to have the meetings right away. And the first meeting will be likely, it was a great idea, some of them. I've got great emails from everyone. Uh, that, that shows interest about things that have to be done. But the first meeting will be more about. How the meeting is gonna be structured, where are they gonna be held at the time, who's gonna, we gotta elect a chairman and, uh, and all of those things, so. I will, um, as, as this list grows of members, if you can forward those to me. Whoever, if you, Shannon, can forward those names to me and I will, uh. I don't really like the word transparent, but, but to try to be as informative as possible about what's happening. And, uh, you know, because we want, definitely want public support, and it seems already there's some feelings about how the. How the committee's being made up that is, uh, that. I guess I think should be addressed, I don't know what the answer is, but does seem that. Certainly, because we want the public, uh, awareness and support, then we need to listen to what they're saying and. Respond accordingly. How they, what their response is again, I don't know. But meetings, I do like the library, hopefully so, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Question?
Assessors contract.
Uh, no.
Our tax.
Tax rebate.
Tax rebate.
Tax rebate.
I'm moving that we refund property taxes in the amount of two hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-seven cents. Be made to, um. Warren Builders LLC for overpayment. In accordance with the provisions of sections twelve, one twenty-nine.
I second that.
Any discussion?
Who's question?
Uh, all in favor?
Aye. We only have one this, this meeting.
Now, old business, Bolton assessor contract, I've been in touch with the Bolton town manager. And, uh. We have agreed to honor the current contract until its expiration in twenty twenty-five. Uh, there is still some discussion at how much. The bump there is in what we owe on that contract, and the two business offices are working it out. So. There's a higher figure and a lower figure, and we have budgeted for the higher figure in case when. We don't have the numbers right, so that. The, uh, I thought Prudence dictated that we, we covered the, the larger amount in budget. Hopefully at the end. The assessment contract, the assessment contract came in. Uh, I passed it through the, our attorneys, our attorneys had several changes that they wanted to make. I learned about four thirty this afternoon. That, that the changes have gone to the contractor who have approved all the con, all the changes we asked for. I have signed off on it and are forwarding us a hard copy, we should be, hopefully by the next. Uh, selectmen meeting, we should have that signed in, in, in process.
When the town's assessment team feels good about everything?
Yes. Yes. Next item is this tax stabilization ordinance, which I moved that we table. Until we figure out what's going on with that.
Agreed.
Is it agreed like a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, discussion of the budget.
Anybody else have anything to say about what?
He said, no. Uh, I, I don't particularly.
So, so we're up, um, last year we're up seven percent, I think. Um, this year I think we're up six point three percent. That's fourteen percent. It doesn't quite match because of rounding, but it's about, about fourteen percent, I think, if I remember correctly, I don't like my computer, but. Um, next year we'll probably end up again with another seven percent, that's twenty-one percent over three years. Um, yeah, I think that it's, um, it's a very, very large increase, it's very far for people to pay that amount of money. Some of us here in town. Are fine, raise my taxes, it's a small expense for some of us. Um, for other people, it's a large expense. Um, an average house, well, I don't know, I don't know how an average house is, four hundred thousand maybe, something?
Two, um, lotos.
Yeah, versus. So if you take a person in a four hundred thousand dollar house, of which there are many, with small families. Um, this is a tax increase of like six or seven or eight, eight hundred dollars. Um, and, and it's gonna go up, that's, that's just the last two years, then voting further. Um. This is things like braces for kids' teeth, they won't get them. These are things like not going on vacation. You know, not having family members on vacation because we never went on it. You know, I hear all the time about how we need, we need, we need, I get it. I sat through, says all of you have, I sat through meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, we need, we need, we need, I get it. No one ever talks about the other side, which is the pay side. It's very, very difficult, and it's not just old people. It's not just people on fixing those. Um, I, I, um, we, we have a lo- large inflation in S C R budget. It's hit the fire department, it's hit the education budget of the inflation numbers. Because our money is worth less now than it was before, um, and I, I get that, I guess it has to go up for inflation. Um, I think some of the increases we could have done without, but. Anyway, um, I, I'd like to be able to send a postcard to our townspeople. I'm telling them that there is a budget referendum coming up. What the date is. And what the three items are that we're voting on, and what the amounts are. With no commentary at all, all it says is, please vote in the referendum. Here's what the general government budget is, here's what the, the, the education budget is, and here's what the other budget. Um, I, I talked to Pete about this, and, uh, you know, I don't know if we've ever done this before, we have former first selectmen and selectmen in the room here. Um, can, uh, I know other towns do it, um, they send up a postcard. It's an expense, I don't know, a thousand dollars maybe? On a, on a twenty-two million dollar budget. Um. I think it's a good idea. Um, uh, it's not a lot of money, it can be done very simply, it doesn't take any time. Um, we sent these things before to everyone. Um, can we, can we do this? I'd like, I can make a motion if you'd like, is there any discussion?
All it is.
Personally, I think that, that, that.
I don't, I'm not saying this is, you're, it's a bad idea, like, I think it's probably a good idea, inform the town whenever possible. I, I just believe that the budget is more the perky with the board of finance, and that the, the card is probably coming from that.
Yes, a question about process? Where, where are we officially in the process of setting the town meeting and that would potentially go to referendum?
The town meeting has already been set, the, uh, the, uh, notice has been sent to the newspapers this morning.
So then we probably fall into that blackout period where you have to be very careful about what. I spend time money on, right? Not that you can't send it, actually, I think it's a great idea, I'm just saying, if there's any decision, that needs to be very carefully considered. That the, it meets the rules of that blackout period once you announce a vote on a topic.
The town meeting was called last Thursday.
How long was two weeks after that? Did we have the referendum?
No, once it's made, oh, oh, no, I'm not sure about the, I'm sorry, I know you're talking about the restriction. Once, once you've called the, the meeting, the restrict, the blackout period starts. It's not that you can't do anything, but you have to follow very clear rules.
So we're looking at about four weeks here. Till. Till this happens, and I, I think that what we should do is we should communicate with the board of finance.
I think that the board of finances voluntary or volunteer organization, this is part of the process of running a referendum. Uh, we are the.
No, they, they're not a voluntary organization, they're an elected body.
They volunteered and they run production, they get elected and they volunteers, they're not paid.
Yeah, no.
Um, so, um, we, uh, I, I think asking them to coordinate this is not what they're, what, what they do. I think that this is part of running an election, part of running a town meeting, part of running the referendum. Send a postcard out, telling people what, what, when it is, where it is, please come vote and what the numbers are. Andy, you've been quiet, I'll, I'll, I'll take Pete's place and, and.
No, just, uh, it's, it's an interesting point, like, uh.
I mean, the planning and zoning, that, that's my experience, so that's what I draw from. We do all of our own, we, uh, our staff does all of their own notifications. They, they don't rely on the board of selectmen to do any of those notifications, that's a little bit different because there's more statutory. Uh, um, rigor around what, how planning and zoning communicates. But again, those commissions, I mean, they're not, they're not volunteer, I don't really consider, yes, people volunteered to be, to serve. But once you're elected, you're, you're a member of, of the town government, and you're a public servant at that point, and. Maybe you don't get paid, but you still have responsibilities, so it's not like you, you know, you're just a. Sorry, I think it's a little bit different than a, just a strictly a volunteer organization.
So you have staff at, at planning and zoning, right?
Uh, yes, there is staff. Pete, does, does the board of finance have staff?
They have a business office.
Then, they have a business office.
So like, so, so what, Bruce can call up? Um, John, and say, I'd like to do a postcard?
Yeah, I, 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 but I, I think you make a good.
Probably have to develop the wording for it.
Right. But I think you make a good point, as the executive branch, but are we, maybe we, are, are we not the ones that are sort of? If it's a week, we are, we're the ones that called the town meeting, we're the ones that are gonna call the referendum, we as the. Then maybe we are the ones to communicate about those very things, board of finances didn't take a vote to have a town meeting. Nor have a referendum, so I think there's a point where you're right about who should communicate it. And whose pocket it should come out in more or less, I think that kind of makes sense. First, do you, do we ever do this in the past, send an email?
We have thought about it, we never had budget to do it, it is not inexpensive to do. Because you're talking about sending something to two thousand households.
First-class lamb.
Well, you could probably do bulk.
Bulk lamb.
And you could, you know, maybe get, get a special deal on the postcards and stuff, but it's, it's not insignificant.
Right.
And.
Print it, you gotta bring it out.
And then having it designed is a whole other thing, it's not, you know, I know it sounds simple, but it's not, um.
I believe that last time they did this, they had to pass it through lawyers to make sure that we made.
You have to pass it through the, um, that goes through the town clerk's office, it's making sure that it, it's. It is, um, explanatory text, that it's not trying to sway people one way or the other. So it goes through a review process, and you're gonna wanna have all, you know. Different people looking at it to make sure and sign off on it that it isn't, um, you know, so. Because the last thing you'd want is to spend town money to send out a postcard, and then have other people say you were trying to sway the vote. Um, one way or the other, that's, that can get you into a lot of trouble, so for all those reasons, we've never done it. Um, but.
Have we had any feedback from people wanting us to do this?
Well, people always want, there's always people after anything that say, I didn't know about that. I, I wish I had known about that.
Right.
But there's even, that happens even when you mail things to people.
We had, I think we had a discussion on board of finance or C I P or somewhere that said, um. We should, um, reach out to people and let them know that there's a town meeting, no, that's a town meeting, what was it, a hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And we didn't send anything there either, um.
Right, so, so that though, you, you can send out something using social media or using. The, the mail system here, I'm like, you know, the email notice. If, um, I think Pete has the authority to send pretty much anything out. Um, eh, but you do have to be careful that you're not gonna, you're not trying to sway, it needs to be factual.
John, you're, I've heard you're. John, you're a former selectman, what's your opinion?
I, um, make this, I think something, wasn't something like this done for the, uh, by the school building committee?
Uh.
But it wasn't by the board of selected.
Okay, but.
That I just.
It was sent out, uh. It's gonna be sent out by the town, if you are gonna send them out, I would say the board of selectmen would be the ones to do it. And, uh, it's, it, it's kind of tricky because you really have to be careful, you don't wanna make it.
All this is the date?
Uh, I, I know, I know. And, but there's still gonna be, half the people are gonna say, you're trying to tell us not to vote for it. The other half are gonna say you are trying to tell us to vote for it.
Yeah.
And, uh, it has to be just very blank and where's the money gonna come from?
What's, when, when we do this, I, I think it, it reads like a ballot, right? I mean, when we, when we come here to vote on the referendum, it, it says shall they blah, 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 and, and the amounts. Right, should, should the title? Yeah, and this, and here's the amount, and shall I do that and so on.
And that is, that is also a typical process, the registrars have to, there has to be, or the, the registrars and the clerk. Have to post in advance what the ballot is, so if it's just purely the ballot, that's a unique process on its own. That has its own legislative and regulatory. The fact of the matter is John's right about being careful about the wording, now that the call has been made as of last Thursday. Um. I think even debating the meetings you have to be careful about. Because you're expending town resources, conducting a meeting right now. I think it's, I think it's that particular, because we debated all of this during school building committee. And it was a struggle to figure it out, and.
Yeah, I just think that, uh, I'll, I'll close out and then we can, we can decide what to do, but I just think that the people of Wellington, I hear all the time from people. I don't know what's going on, nothing ever gets communicated. And I heard also lots of times, well, you know, you should be involved, you should, you should talk to people. You should, um, you know, go on social, a lot of people aren't on social media. Um, the only people that want to hear about this stuff are people who want to hear about it. Alright, you know, that's, that's the problem, it's a passive media, it doesn't work.
We, we do have a new email notification system for people who want. Uh. Yeah, well, I, let me finish my sentence and then I'll call on Erica. Um, we do have. A email notification system through, through the town. So that you can sign up for that and you can get all the information that, that you'd want. On a push notification rather than a pull notification, and the pull notifications are always present. Erica?
Thanks, Peter. Matt, I don't disagree, I think more information is always good. Um, I paused because your tone just from your start of this was your concern that it's too high. That conversation already tends to sway, so what you put on the postcard needs to be very clear to stay away from that. And I believe the blackout period is once the meet, the referendum is called, and if I'm, uh, not. Correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, are we looking at a, a, do less, just less than a two-week window? So you'd have to design something based on the questions and the numbers that come from that, on that date. Um, run it through your attorneys, the town clerk is the one the explanatory text comes from. Your office may do some of the preparation, but it involves a lot of work. Make no mistake, it is a lot of work, Matt. Um, and, um, there is a cost to it, um, I thought about it for six years. I looked at what other towns did, and many of the towns that put out good information had considerably more staff than we did. Um, it's, it's a sad reality, um, and I struggle with how to get information out there. So you, you really need to, before you could say yes or no, you'd need to know all of the parameters that you're working with. In that time between calling, uh, between adjourning the town meeting to referendum and the referendum happening. And I'm just not sure you're ready to have all those answers yet.
Thank you. So we have a motion?
Yeah.
And the motion is, I'm sorry, I, I, I got involved in the conversation and, and forgot what the motion was.
No, no, I don't.
No, there wasn't a motion.
Okay, it wasn't a most, but if there was a motion to send a postcard, that's, uh, that would, again, it's, it is. It seems like everyone agrees it's a good idea, but, but the mechanics of it seem painful.
Yeah, very, 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 very difficult.
Very painful, what, could it be something that we did?
Difficult and expensive.
No, but may, maybe you start paying for lawyers, it starts getting expensive, Matt, and, and I just agree with you on that. Well, it's a good subject, and since this happens every year, maybe for this budget season. We don't have an option for this, but maybe next year we would, so should we, should we keep this as an odd, something to talk about to say?
Yes.
You know, next year we wanna do a postcard, and it has to be done this way.
And we agree, all three of us right now, that next year we will have a postcard?
I, I would be.
Yeah, yeah, the budget for next year.
It's not in the but, but there must be a budget for communication under a general heading.
There is.
Because there's gotta be. Because there's gotta be, so, because, because, right, it just be, maybe not for a postcard, but there has to be. Communication from public notices, there's, I know there is, so. It, I, I, I think it's worth keeping alive. But this year might not, there might not be time.
But we do have.
Then we ought to start the discussion on this earlier next year.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, then we, then we don't run into blackout periods, we don't run into that kind of thing. We should, we should be doing it. Six to eight weeks earlier.
Oh, we'll, we'll remember.
We'll remember. Uh, and Shannon will remind you.
But to this, uh, we do have the, it'll be on the Willing, Town of Wellington webpage, right, that. Um, what's the rules for, Matt, your postcard idea, could that be on the webpage? If a design was approved, is that a logical, they're not just meetings that I? Don't know, I, it's, I don't know the.
It doesn't matter whether it's the webpage or a mailer as far as the rules go. The rules are the same if you expend or or receive to expend municipal resources of any fashion. Which is sitting here tonight using the lights and the town internet.
During that blackout period.
During the blackout period, any expense of town resources, including posting things on the website.
Okay.
Has to meet the rules of the blackout period.
Sure, all right.
Um, so that's, that's how it's defined, any municipal resource of any kind.
So, um, let's just be clear here, what I'm proposing and what I want to do is to simply print. What the numbers are and ask new people to vote.
Right, which would probably. Whatsoever. Right, which would probably get approved and would probably be okay in the blackout period, and once it goes through all the checks and balances. And I can, it's easy for me to say, because I don't have to approve it. Um, but you did start off with concern, right? So, so you, you have, you're right, you have to make sure it's separated from the concern about the budget being too high. It's, it's a great idea, we just, unfortunately, like everything else in government, it's complicated.
But, but it definitely does, uh, with your board to do it. As opposed to other boards, because you're the ones calling the town meeting.
Right.
So, so like, we're putting a zoning, putting a zoning call as a hearing, that, that, you have to. That's why explaining his own responsibility to communicate that, but this town meeting is not called by the board of finance. Right, it's like, like all the references are called by.
I, I, I believe that, that the town meeting call had the numbers you're looking for in advance.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
It'll do, it'll take a long time whatsoever.
It's, it's, it's already on the website.
Yes, yes.
It's already in the newspaper.
It's already in the newspaper, and no one looks at it.
I submit.
Well.
Did you look at it?
I didn't.
I, I had to read the whole thing at the meeting, so of course I looked at it. I had to.
On the website.
I have not looked at it on the website. Because I.
Well, if it's already been published, could it be put on a prominent place, probably could it be on the website or page or something? Is that a thing? Unbelievable idea.
Right?
Yes. I, I don't, I don't, there's nothing wrong with communicating something we already communicated, it's been approved.
Yeah.
I can't see that being a problem.
Just putting.
Probably it can be knowing our.
Yeah, probably is a problem.
Sorry, that snarkiness, I'm not gonna do that. All right, so I think what we should do is put, definitely put this on our agenda for early in the process next year, and we. We can talk to, uh, Fish about putting that on the front page, and it.
I believe a call can, uh, call for, for referenda, a call for town meeting can be sent, is already sent out as an email, right? And it's, it has all that information already on it, so we're already sending it in an email.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everyone who, who chooses to get it, non-intrusive, you have to express an interest in town politics. Request we put on the list and then they'll pick, get your numbers on what the budget is.
Yeah, and.
I don't want, I don't want to argue the point again.
No, 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 what I, what I, what I'm saying, Matt, is that you, you wanna expend a huge amount of effort for people who have shown absolutely no interest.
Absolutely, those are our taxpayers.
Yes. But. Think spending a lot of time and expense and effort to reach people who have kind of made an effort to not be reached.
Are we going back now, we're not gonna do it next year?
No, I, I think we ought to do it next year, I just.
All right, so let's take a little move on to the next year, okay?
Yep. So anybody that would, uh, which brings us to our closing present to speak. Once again, the rules are the same, uh, we're, we're encouraging participation, but you may be cut off or. To advance the cause, Mike?
Mike McCucrover Springs Drive, uh, I just would like to thank the board of selectmen for the speedy, um, compilation of this committee. Um, I'm excited to be a part of it, um, and, uh, sorry. I would like to thank, anyway, um. The, I am looking forward to working on it and that. The, whether the people you didn't pick tonight or picked tonight or the names I didn't hear about, I'm sure. Everyone had potential to be good candidates, uh, it would have been good to work. With any of them, um, but I am look forward, looking forward. Uh, to getting this moving, and the only comment I would make is, uh, when you had the difficult decision to make, that you. Pete commented that I think I'm gonna make myself very unpopular, uh, with this decision, I think, um. I don't think you intended, but it cast a little bit of a shadow on Brit's appointment, I would offer that leadership is sometimes making the unpopular decision. And so you were exercising leadership, doing what you thought was right, whether I agree with it or anybody else agrees with it, um, so.
I didn't mean to cast any aspersions.
I, I'm just making a point, I think, and I'm also making a point to you that that is what leadership is. You don't get to avoid the mud. Thank you.
I, and on that, on that note, I wanna thank you for, for your, for considering it and for actually act, acting. In a way that you think might not make you popular, but I think that you might find that it increases your popularity overall. Because I, because. Reaching out and looking beyond, uh, your, your political party and what is the easy path. I think a lot of people can appreciate that and will like seeing that you did that, so.
Yeah, and the only thing is, I, I, it, it wasn't easy either way.
Right.
I, I, I. I think, I think.
And I, I think you just wanna done a great job too, I just wanna say that for the record.
Um, I just wanted to, I, I, oh, Jen, the Delco over Springs Drive, sorry, um. I just wanted to circle back to all the comments that was made about the budget, um, and. I, as a person who sits on two board slash committees that. Developed budgets or talked about budgets or had their hands in some kind of budget. Um, there, the deliberations are excruciating and, um. I feel compelled to make a comment about the fact that these decisions are not made cavalierly. And it's easy for a board. Such as yours to sit up there and say it's not a good idea to raise taxes. You, in my opinion, you can't just say that, you have to have an alternative, we talked about the school. The school building failed, and so now we have to do something else, it's not the school building failed and now we're not doing anything. So the surprise at how much money this is costing is a little disingenuous, I feel like, and, um, if. If folks on boards are going to be obstructionist about, about how to pay for things, there needs to be another solution. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. John?
John Blessington, twenty-nine Mason Road, I'm a little confused about a different issue that was covered tonight. Apparently, Mr. Tella had a, uh, FOI. Request going from way back in the previous administration, it came over to this administration, finally the FOI Commission. Uh, allowed him to go in and look at what he wanted to look at, and, uh. Then somebody made the remark that he could have gone and looked at it at any time and that the. FOI's decision this time was not, uh, that he could look at it, but that he didn't have to pay for it. So if the question was, he wanted to go in and didn't want to pay for it, how much was he being asked to pay for it?
I would love to give you an answer, I don't have that in, information.
Okay, because.
Anything above free is money, so.
Well, anything above free can be a reasonable amount or it can be less. Charged so much that the guy won't.
I didn't, that didn't sound like a voter. We want the future voters, okay, seeing no more hands in the room, Erica?
Thank you, Erica Wyszynski, um, to Mr. Blessington's point, um, in the past. There had been an FOI request and, um, was not willing to pay thirty dollars for it. So this was considerably more than that, uh, but there's not a willingness to pay in the past, so. Um, the documents were always available to view, but to physically have, there was a cost with them. Um, I am, I hear the concerns of Mr. Clark regarding budget increases. Um, having crafted a budget for the last six years, um, I worked tirelessly. Um, many hours outside of public meetings and many, many hours in public meetings determining the budgets. The board of selectmen is asked to create for the needs of the town and town government. Um, maybe if this board had spent more time working on the budget. Maybe you could have come to a budget that you were comfortable with, Mr. Clark, and I would encourage you, uh, to attend more and have more. Public budget meetings, that was very disappointing throughout the entire process. Um, Peter, uh, I wanna thank you for, um, maybe hearing some of the concerns about the makeup of the. Fire Department Building Committee, um. Uh, your comments about doing something that was unpopular, I'm not sure who you think it was unpopular with. Um, if it's your political party that you're gonna be unpopular with, I don't think that was your intention, but that's certainly how it comes across. Um, you should always, um, be doing what you believe is right for the town, um, and not a, a particular opinion. Thank you.
Go ahead, Paul, see? Yeah? Yeah, I, I'm not being disingenuous, um, and I want to raise taxes, I realize we need to raise taxes. Um, and I'm participating as best as I can, um, so, and I'm certainly not being obstructionist. I'll make my moves known and, um, welcome, thank you.
Seeing no more hands? Um, anybody else think of bringing welfare? I, I would like to mention that we have recently lost the, uh, first selectman for the town of Woodstock, Jay, Jay Swan. Jay passed away suddenly in his sleep, he was a, uh. I, 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 an acquaintance, he, he was the guy that got me involved with the P, uh, counter safety and. Uh, I've been very close friends with his sister for a long time, so. We all miss Jay and we think of the town of Woodstock and. And hope that they can weather this storm. Uh, I do remind people of the town meeting, uh, coming up, uh, it's on the website, if anybody's interested in finding the information.
Wellington Day is looking for vendors.
Wellington Day is looking for vendors, you can contact, uh, Melissa McKinnon through, uh, social media. And she has a Facebook page, uh, Wellington Day or something like that, uh. On, if you look for it on, uh, Facebook, there it is, and I'm sure she's not that tough to find.
And everyone should sign up for email notifications.
Everyone should sign up for email notifications and when we get up and running on. Uh, Everbridge, then, uh, we are hoping that people sign up for that as well so that they can get. Get the information that they need in a extremely timely manner, particularly in person. Uh, I have nothing else.
Good welfare? A good welfare item, uh, I think you should probably start talking about the Memorial Day Parade early because attendance has gotten a little low over the years. So it'd be good to encourage people to.
Memorial Day Parade's coming up, the Memorial Day Parade Committee has been working hard on that, and Degada and Shannon. Uh, we've already gotten, uh, uh, support. Uh, notifications from the Connecticut State Police. And they.
Will be my other comment, that's great, sometimes we have a little trouble with lining up the state police.
Okay. Right, we're, we're, we're on that because.
It would be great to see a lot of townspeople there.
Yes, it would. I am, I am, uh. Forward to seeing a lot of people there, I mean, Memorial Day is always a sad day for me, so. I will be anticipating. Yeah, anything else?
Welcome to your journey.
Seven. All in favor, I?
Leading a journey.